...meeting with the work session of Caroline County Board of Supervisors present today. Mr. Forehand from the...
Madison.
Madison.
It gets tough.
Madison district, Mr. Thomas from the Madison I district, Mr. Sealy from the Bowling Green district, Mr. Black from West Carolina, Ms. Wong from Port Royal, and Reggie Underwood from the Greeley Church district. Just a small note, we're going to reorder the agenda, same items. We want to go into closed session first and then item number one, discussion of proposed FY 2022 budget will be second, followed by discussion of the proposed tax rate third. So if I could get a motion to go in the closed session?
So move.
Second.
I'd move that this board convene in closed session pursuant to the acquisition of real property exemption of section 2.2, 3711 A3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss a potential real estate acquisition related to a new fire station in Florida.
Alright, so moved and properly seconded to go in the closed session with the reading of the closed motion to convene in closed session. All in papers say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, we go in the closed session. So let's see here, everyone would leave and come back once we finish. Let's see right now. I'll pin them on for everything.
All right, can I get a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the Carolina County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from these.
A motion to come out of close, I make a motion to come out of closed session, second.
A motion and second to come out of closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Black, certification.
I move that the Carolina County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters were identified in the motion in meeting a closed meeting were heard discussed or considered by the board.
I mean, the second.
Second.
And probably the second, voted, probably voted and second we come out of certificate, that we do our certification, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Forehand, did you certify?
I so certified.
Mr. Thomas, you'll certify. Mr. Sealy, you'll certify.
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Mr. Black, you so certify.
I so certify.
As long as you so certify.
I so certify.
And I so certify. Fine.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion come out of closed session.
Okay, Mr. Sealy.
I'd like to get approval for a public hearing for a possible condemnation on property for the Sparta fire station.
There's a motion on the floor to authorize a public hearing by staff regarding the combination of Sparta, what, our Sparta fire department, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everybody's second.
Yeah. Okay. Ayes have it, we will authorize staff to do the public hearing. All right, item number one on our agenda, discussion of proposed FY 22 budget, Mr. Colley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What I have up for you right at the moment is general fund revenues. If I can make my computer work. Things always gotta be difficult. Maybe it's because of share. I'm not making it better. I don't have as much on the screen, but that's all right. I don't understand why my slider bar doesn't work. Anyway, maybe because we're in a Zoom and share. So the, the current.
Oh, you got it framed frozen.
Oh, I know I have that frozen to the left, or I won't know where I, where I am. But normally you can move the slider bar and kind of get around, but anyway. This, the, um, the equalized tax rate as I talked about last week was sixty-nine, sixty-nine cents. Get you within. Where I'm sitting, hard to say, but. Six hundred dollars. I wonder why that, whose pointer is that?
Aaron's is the pointer, that's probably why the slider doesn't work.
It's like I said, we're, we're looped amongst, I'm looped into the Zoom so I can stream out to get into the projector. So I'm not directly hooked to the projector, they, they, they are, so, anyway. Um, that's slowing some of it down. Um, so that's the revenue generated by sixty-nine cents. And so this, this doesn't work, it's gonna be, maybe you can, whoever else has got, see, when I move that slider, I don't go anywhere. You move that slider, can you move that slider?
No, we.
You can't move anything.
I can't move anything.
That's gonna make things very difficult, I didn't know this would, would operate in such a fashion. Because then everything else becomes.
Yeah, point. You told us, please scroll.
Yeah, I gotta get to where the stuff lives at the, at the. Yeah, but it's at a different spot. So that, that chart that I've got for those pennies are at the top. So if you, um, if you go sixty-nine cent, I just want you to see, um, that would be three million thirty-nine thousand and a pin, and a dollar out of the general fund balance to balance the budget. So that's why I have proposed what I have proposed at the eight cents.
How much does that leave in the fund balance? Somebody needs to mute.
Yeah, I think everybody is muted, um. Tamika, you might have to help me with that after, we just went over this earlier today. That would, that would immediately end our ability and probably lower our bond rating to not having a bond rating. It's our fund balance, the strength of our fund balance that, and that's what we were just on with both rating, rating agencies all afternoon, so. Um, I just, I don't, I don't, no matter what it leaves, that would, that, that would be a big credit negative to take that kind of money out of the fund balance.
Mr. Cohen, we currently have seventeen million in our unassigned fund balance.
Yes, so three million out of unassigned would be fourteen maybe, way, well, be way underfalled. So we, we don't have really the ability to do that, um, that type of draw. Um, what I wanted to show you. Trying to find a faster way to move around, but none of them real good. The eight cents was what I had proposed. Which as I, I'd stated, that gives you also a, a June increase of a one-time bump of one million one hundred sixty-six thousand back into the fund balance in June, and then you would be, I don't know how far this will take me to the end, further than I wanna go. That would still require transfer from reserves of about five hundred thousand, so with the one-time bump, you would still be a net positive if we spent everything and collected everything to budget for twenty-one. So we, if we spend our twenty-one amount to the penny and collect revenues to the penny, we would still be putting in about seven hundred thousand, six hundred thousand to the fund balance, which we'll be putting in more, more than that with. We put in money into fund balance this year with CARES funds. We just, we expect in twenty-one to receive three million in CARES funds in sometime in May, from what they just approved last week. We don't even have all the spending guidelines on that, so I don't anticipate any spending out of that at all until sometime in twenty-two, we can develop a plan for what those things would be. And that doesn't have to be expended until twenty, uh, December of twenty-four. So there's no rush like they did with the CARES they handed out, uh, just this last summer where we got two point six million, they go, you gotta spend it by the end of the year, and then we've developed a plan, and then they give us two point six more with the same deadline to spend by the end of the year. So we don't have those constraints yet, they haven't developed all of the parameters for what that can be spent.
Mr. Cohen, so what you're saying, based on your presentation last week, in order to meet the budget obligations that you presented to us, with the equalized rate of sixty-nine cent, we would still, we would then need to increase our tax base, our tax rate to seventy-seven cent, but it would still leave us five hundred thousand short that would need to be transferred.
If we spent the whole, if we spent one hundred percent and collected.
If we spent one hundred percent.
Right. We, no, and, and historically, we don't overspend our budget, normally our revenues are strong, they're, they, our revenues for twenty-one for a lot of things have been stronger than we budgeted for, our sales taxes up twenty-some percent. So it still seems to be running strong month over month right now. So I, I expect our revenues to still be pretty strong for the twenty-one year, so I, I think we'll be a net positive to the fund balance. I'm not recommending spending a lot, because I just got off the Zoom with the credit agency, so yeah, we, we, but I think we have the ability to spend some out of the fund balance, so, um, there's a possibility if, if eight cents, I, I believe that's what you need to do. We, our, our debt that we are potentially taking on, that, that it's on this call, the cost of that, basically, in the utility side. And out, and y'all probably don't have this, you got tired of looking at it earlier today.
Two cents for the first year.
Yeah.
One cent and a half.
Yeah, so, and it, so we're looking at pennies we need for debt service, so if you, and we're not gonna drop in debt service for a few years before, as you remember Courtney going over this, that, it doesn't, we're gonna peak in around twenty-four before we start dropping down. So if we don't do the eight, we'd probably be back because of debt servicing, continued growth in the, in the operations or budget back needing more pennies, so. I'm not guaranteeing that eight's gonna get you there either, because remember, I showed you eleven, but I think if, if you go back to say five or six, you're probably gonna be back with additional pennies needed later. If you remember way back, I recommended four cents, we ultimately went up one. So we've lived with a very level, and that's in these documents, a level tax of eighty-three cent. We went down to eighty-two in six, you know, after the reassessment, but then went back up one penny because we went down a penny. But we've lived along since the referendum for the school, the high school in Madison and the radio system at eighty-three cent. Other than that, one year we were at eighty-two, we really were too low, and went and got that penny back, but really hadn't had any increase. And think of the operational increases in the operational costs and the amount of debt that we're, have been taken on, so that, I don't wanna be the one that's just beating on your raise tax, raise taxes for nothing, but I think we've gotta be able to generally support the government that we're trying to operate with the added growth pressures that, that we're seeing in, in the debt that we're having to take on to support the, the growth that, that we're, we're getting. And that's what we just went through with, with the rating agency, yes, sir.
Okay, can you show me again? Ms. Smith said the fund balance was seventeen million.
Unrestricted.
Un, unrestricted. The three million number, where was that again?
Oh, it's where the five oh three is now, I changed the tax rate, which changed that number, so.
Yeah, I'm saying I need to see that, because I'm just trying to write them down myself. The three million.
Three million thirty-nine, thirty million dollars.
Three million thirty-nine thousand.
One dollar.
And one dollar, that's the reduction in the fund balance.
If you went to sixty-nine cent.
If we stay.
At, at the equalized rate.
Okay, so the fund balance would go to fourteen million. And, and that's not, not counting any additional revenue.
Correct, that was just revenue growth that we were anticipating in light of sales tax and stuff like that.
What you just proposed. Excuse me, what you just proposed, fund balance is still seventeen million. What we would take out of the fund balance at eight cents is what?
Five oh three, eight fifty-eight, but we have put in one million one from the one-time bump, not counting any other increases.
We take out, all right, all right, that's another, that's another step. So we, we would have five hundred thousand and three that we would take out, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, five oh three, zero, zero, zero.
Five oh three, eight fifty-eight, that's the number.
Five oh three.
Yeah, anyway.
Five oh three.
Five, eight, eight, eight.
Okay, and then the fund balance would be minus that five oh three, so we're adding that five oh three.
But we would be adding one point one.
Wait, 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 that's another number. So, so we're adding that five oh three, or subtracting.
Subtracting, subtracting.
So the fund balance would be sixteen five. But there's an extra feature, because we have a June tax payment, which is really part of this fiscal year, and that adds in how much?
I'm getting back over to that.
Is it one million one hundred sixty-six thousand?
One million one hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars, and that's a.
One hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars.
Right, and that's basically a guesstimate of ninety-two percent collection, I think, yes, ninety-two percent. If you, if it was a hundred percent, it'd be one million two. So I, I back that off a little bit to be conservative, because you're never gonna get it exact.
So then, the final net result, the fund balance would be somewhere in seventeen point seven range?
Correct, but it's gonna be more than that.
Because you expect.
Because we've put almost a million dollars in it from public safety pay from CARES that we didn't expend, that we didn't spend. We budgeted it for twenty-one but didn't spend, because CARES paid for it.
Right, right, right.
And, um, and that's in the general fund, it's not in the CARES two sixty fund, so that's.
We can consider that part of the unencumbered balance, right?
It becomes, it will, it'll become, plus if we under.
That's not affecting these numbers.
No, no, no. Because that doesn't, I won't really know that until June thirtieth.
You're saying.
Right, right. But I know it'll be more than that, what I'm saying is, the, the one million one six is just a direct result of the tax went up eight cents.
That's, that's just because of the June tax.
Correct.
If the non-tax payment instead of eight cents is four cents.
Yeah, I'll show you what that does, correct, or, yeah. So if you, if you went down four cents, you say you went to seventy-three, then that number goes down to five eighty-three.
That's half.
But your number on the backside doesn't stay five oh eight.
Right, right.
Yeah, that jumps off, that jumps up three hundred and sixteen a penny you took out.
But that's.
No, it's still lost.
It'd be a futile.
No, 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 see, see, we're talking, that's, that's why I'm trying to go slow, so I can talk about one thing at a time.
Okay, I'm not trying to go too fast.
No, I mean, I mean, that's fine, but it's, it's just me. The June increase is only based on how much the taxes are raised above sixty-nine cents.
Correct.
Because sixty-nine is equalized, every penny, make it seventy if you would, because then that'll make it easy for fuzzy math later on. Every penny we raise the tax, we get a hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars in the June bump, because that's a payment that comes in before the fiscal year is over.
Right.
That money will all, will automatically be part of the unencumbered balance.
Correct.
Now, the unencumbered balance on, on your other one at, at nothing.
Was one million, whatever.
One, one sixty-six, one sixty-six, yeah, okay.
Just remember, it's two sides of the equation, when you change one, you change the other. So we have another number that's going down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because, because you're, you're not going up eight cents.
Yeah, so you're.
That, that number's gonna go down.
To stay back, to stay balanced, the, the, you're going up three sixteen.
See, that's.
More from the fund balance, for every penny you go down. And you're collecting less in the bump, plus you're taking more from the fund balance. So you're gonna be more negative in the fund balance for every penny you drop down under eight cents, so eight cents, you're five hundred.
But you're telling me on the same side that I'm gonna get a fund balance increase because of the COVID money.
You are.
For salaries I didn't spend.
Correct.
It's one-time money.
All these are still one-time money.
Everything is one-time money.
Well, no, the tax rate is, is every year, the difference is, if we increase one cent, then the fund balance that we need to balance the budget will decrease, will.
Increase, increase.
No.
It increases, I mean.
What we need out of the fund balance shows up.
Need out of the increases.
Correct, it, it goes up the same amount right off hand.
So our balance does decrease.
But the reality is, but the reality is the fund balance number he uses is just a number to balance the budget.
Right.
Normally, yes.
Because in the, at the end of the year, on a good year, if we take two million out of the fund balance, we put in three million.
We've had that happen.
Right.
We budgeted two point four or something and never took anything out.
But this last year, we went one point seven into the fund balance, and we haven't, I mean, we're getting it now.
And that's what I'm saying, because we're getting closer and closer, we've been farther and farther away from the last tax increase.
Okay, so.
And expenses have continued to.
What, what's the difference between the two years in terms of the one seven that we took out this year?
In twenty.
What was, versus nineteen when we had two million and we.
Oh, it was eighteen, the last time we actually put money in the fund balance was eighteen, we took out a million, nine hundred thousand. We, we were just budgeting tighter, revenues estimating tighter, instead of being more conservative, they were, they were tighter, and expenditures came in closer to, you know, we underspent, but maybe not by as much as in the past.
And now we got, we got.
And we know we're adding more, when we add, when you add built-in operational costs, like a school raise of five percent, that's gonna pretty much get spent. You know, so you, there's certain things that I can control, we don't do a project, or we don't do this, or don't, you know, there's gonna be some turnover and there's some employees down, and so we don't spend the total compensation. But schools are, you know, most of them are contract, they sign a contract, they're getting paid, and it's, you know, sheriff loses a couple of deputies, it takes some months to get them on, they get some, you know, we, we have some savings. And that's, you end up with some savings in fire and rescue, our big department, we end up in savings, we can end up with some savings in public utilities and public works, our really big, large departments. But smaller departments, it's hard, you know, just not a lot of turnover, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of savings there.
So right now, that, this, well, mine is a little harder, but what I need to see is you got, you've got proposed tax rate, and you've got one-time bump. I need to see on the screen fund balance and, and net fund that balance, can you go, go down to the fund balance?
You mean, put the seventeen million in?
Find, find wherever the fund balance is on the spreadsheet.
The fund balance is not on the spreadsheet, just how much we pull out. Because if fund balance becomes a, a guesstimate at the, at closing of, of twenty-one in June thirtieth, and I can't tell you exactly what that's gonna be, I just think it's gonna be positive, because we, I believe we're gonna put money in more than what we budgeted. I don't believe our revenues are gonna be upside down enough to eat up that nine hundred thousand dollars we put in of CARES money.
See, what I was thinking is, because, because you've said one of the determining factors is how much we have in the fund balance.
That's a, that's our major one, it's the only one we've got that's really positive.
And, and right now, we got seventeen million in, but we're planning to take three million out at no tax increase. That's the num, what the number's at. Three million, right?
Right, yeah, if you, if it's sixty-nine, it was three million.
Add no tax increase. Of that three million, how much would we get back at the end, and you're saying you don't know?
Well, at, at three million, because of no tax increase, there's no one-time bump. You maybe make back nine hundred thousand, so you'd still be another two million in after being one point seven million in, in twenty, and then set nine hundred thousand in in nineteen. That's gonna, that'll be three declining years of negative fund balance, and I, and I, your, your, your credit rating.
I'm, I'm just trying to do the numbers, Charlie.
Oh, I know, I know.
I'm not trying to make it.
Oh, okay.
You know, one thing or another, I'm just trying to understand unemotional what the numbers say.
That would be what I would think they would say, you would be down at least two million if you just took three million out of the fund.
Okay.
You might be better than that, but that's a guess, I can't, that's hard to tell you in, in March, that that, it'll be much more positive.
So when you went up to four cents, sixty-nine to seventy-three? And Ms. Smith gave us this wonderful sheet, so. The person that has a two hundred thousand dollar house is gonna pay one sixty, or sixteen sixty now, equalize sixteen fifty-six, and then they go to seventeen fifty-two. So that's almost a hundred dollar increase for the whole year. Now, where does that number get us? In the fund balance, with the one-time bumpers now.
Five hundred.
Six hundred thousand, almost.
Five eighty-three. One million one hundred seventy, one, one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand and four hundred and thirty dollars.
Is what we're taking out?
Would be what you would be pulling out.
Okay, that's so, three eighty-four.
That's on how much the tax increase.
Four cents.
But, but he was saying we might get nine hundred thousand back at the end of the year.
Mr. Cohen, is there a way to determine how much real estate, like, how many, how much of our increase in real estate value was from improvements? Like new structures being built, garages, things like that, versus just a strict, my same house went up?
I don't get that detail, that'd be more of a mark bassoon, whether they could query that data and see, and pull that out, I don't have that. I just have what the total, non, I mean, the taxable value is. I don't have a breakdown of. And I don't know that they know that, they may be able to query the AS four hundred, I can't even, I, that's a mark bassoon question to ask his staff what they can pull out of that data.
Number of housing units. Number of housing units, things like that, and that comes from Mr. percent.
All that, yeah, all this data gets turned over from the reassessment to, to commissioner's office and then dumped in the computer system. And so then they know the, the change in the value and what's basically the land book. So they know how much, you know, improvements are as a total. And, and, but improvements are considered your house. Even if you didn't do any improvement to it, it's, you know, it's under listed as improvement, and this was what it's called. And then, you know, land value. So I know they know land value and improvement value, but whether the improvement value shows how many new structures or new additions or remodels or that, I don't know that they know that data or that it's coded in enough way that they can see that out of the reassessment.
Reason I ask is a couple of people that have approached me that have had, that have had concerns about their assessment have all added significant structures, you know, big garage. And things like that, completed basements and, and. Yeah, that's, that's, it's something, but you know, if someone's putting, you know, building a forty thousand dollar garage or a forty thousand dollar barn and their assessment goes up thirty-eight thousand, I'm not really concerned about that. But as, you know, again, that's, I guess, I got, need to, don't have enough data to even know what to be concerned about, I guess, when it comes to.
But remember, you're getting, you get the increase on the assessment just for the property itself first.
Okay.
And then increase on the upgrade.
Well, no, they're getting, they're getting one bill.
It's not separate, but I'm saying you're getting one bill, but it's because the overall value of the house now has increased.
The parcel.
Charlie, the neighboring uh, uh, tax rates, what are they, Ian? Do we know what the?
I, I don't write off hand, we can find those out.
I, I'd like to know what the neighboring uh, real estate rates are.
They get a million, they used to get a million one a penny.
Go one to the right.
They're advertising eighty-five.
One to the right.
On the real estate.
Key and equals eighty-three eighty-four. AD, alpha, delta. Three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four, I thought you said eighty.
Or lower. That's that number from the other cell.
I don't know, it's, it's hard to move around, so I can move around a lot easier in my desk.
Now we can see that number.
You'll see that change.
Every time you change, you can go change the tax rate now and we can see.
Good memory.
Okay, now it rolls down.
And you can see at the bottom, you know, the five oh three versus the eleven, one million six that you got.
And I'm, I'm, I'll go back to one penny. Okay, so now it's two million, that's the transfer. We just moved that number way down to the other screen.
Right, you just moved it up here, yeah.
That two, two seven, 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 two, yeah, right. Hold that, oh, okay. You can just go down one and make it, make that whole cell.
And that's, and, and, and so Charlie, this is really, if we agree with what you presented in terms of increases, this is what it would take to match that.
No, that's at seventy cents.
That's at seventy cents.
Yeah.
When you, when you presented your budget last week.
Right, I presented.
It was seventy-seven cents.
That's correct.
So that is, that's what I'm saying, that is based on all of the.
The fixed cost that I.
The costs that you put in the budget.
The top ten.
In order to meet those obligations, we need seventy-seven cents. We don't cut those obligations. If we cut some of those obligations, then that cost will drop.
That is correct, but some of them are fixed.
Right, some of them are fixed, but, um, okay.
Now there's another, there's another cell we don't have that you, you said was basically a guess. And that's how much we end up putting back in the unencumbered balance at the end of the year.
Right, that, 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 that I would expect, I'd, I'd hope to be at, you know, that nine hundred thousand dollars, but, but I can. We're getting ready to pull five hundred and some thousand dollars out of the fund balance to do the registrar's addition. Which there again was almost mandated by all the changes in state law. So hoping, I don't, you know.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, but I'm, I wanna have all the numbers. If, cause we did this before and we talked about a tax increase and then we had more money come back than we thought. So, and we need to get money back to the.
The problem is we're three years now going into the fund balance, that's, that's.
That's what, that's what worries me and we know we're increasing debt service. And call, operational cost and that we weren't doing then as bad. We, we were getting hit with a double, triple whammy this particular year of the state passing mandates. Needing to do the borrowings that we're doing, especially the, the sewer borrowings and that type of thing.
Salary increases.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, we're down thirteen deputies, we've lost two more. One left of profession, they were hiring four, but.
No, I thought that was fourteen.
Oh, no, I admit, it's fourteen, I hadn't heard that. I thought we were thirteen. One left, one went to another agency and one left at the law enforcement profession. So I've heard we've got four we're trying to bring on, but sometimes that doesn't work all the way, all the way out.
That was the other thing we talked about trying to target.
Yep. We, we talked about targeting, you know, rather than trying to eat the whole pie, cause I am concerned about the, the, the tax rate and I, I just think we're gonna have to cut in and to get to where I wanna be mentally and looking at tax rate and the, the cost and the unencumbered balance and I think that we're gonna have to make some cuts. I just, I just don't see how we can, we can give the, make this whole the way we're going right now, based on the backs of the taxpayer. I just don't, I just don't think it's possible. I, I just don't. And I just think some, sometimes, you know, sometimes you, you have to, to cut those budgets and this very well may be the time, we've got, we've got a lot going on in terms of costs that we have to, you know, like I said, the sewer system, the, the, the debt service. I mean, those are things that, as taxpayers are not going to see, and that's unfortunate that they don't see that. They're, they're building the way for the future, cause we need the sewer system and ladysmith in order to continue to, to build. The fact that we have the, the increase in uh, housing. Those, those are things that we have to prepare for now are uh, fire and rescue, sheriff's office. I mean, those are things that we're pre, preparing for now. That's why I said we have to make, take advantage of every penny. You know, there are some needs and there are some wants. We have to make sure that all the needs are taken care of to ensure that the, the taxpayer is not unduly burdened from us not being, being afraid to say, you've gotta tighten your belt a little bit.
One, one thing I would add, one thing I would add real quick, um, just in uh, planning and, and building. We are almost at the historic building of the building boom in the two thousands. And we had twice employees in that department than we do today. So we're asking people to continue to serve the public, you know, so it's, there are, there are no new employees in this. I mean, so if we start, if we start asking people to go, if some people go around, you know, schools are gonna mandate a raise and some people the states mandated, they get raises and then we leave these other folks out, that, that is very.
They didn't mandate everybody to get a raise.
I know they didn't, but that's what I'm saying.
Flating is the word.
Correct.
They didn't mandate everybody to get a raise, but they, what they mandated was the SOQ's three and two is five. The rest of it, with the, the rest of the money sometimes has to come from other places, means you have to tighten your belt. And that's the same way with the sheriff's office, with everything else that we, we're trying to do. We're trying to make it as amenable to everyone as possible, but you can only go to the well and draw so much water out of the well. And that's the reality. And with employees now, there are sometimes when, I don't, I haven't heard anyone say that they're overworked yet. I've seen people working diligently, but I don't think anybody's breaking their hump yet. Now I might be wrong, but I haven't heard of, I haven't heard of, maybe you guys have, but I haven't heard that any department is overwhelmed.
Nobody's coming to say they're overwhelmed. I just was pointing out the, the workload being done versus the amount of employees that were doing it in the past.
Right, a one teacher can teach ten or she can teach twenty. So cause I get two new students, no, man, doesn't mean I need a new teacher. See, so that's what I'm looking at in terms of what is it that we really need to make sure that we're being efficient as possible with taxpayer dollars.
Reggie just made me think of something. Did we ever get the number for what a one percent increase for the non-SOQ people got?
Yes.
What is that?
You have it to make it.
Okay, we're gonna have to clone her then.
I have it, I just don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, you got this thing to worry about.
But I've got it, I got it in the, the same email that Tamika got. But that's how we've figured out.
I'll wait for that number.
My comment wasn't, so there may be places that we can look at, especially in a certain department. This budget, I mean, there's W employees, there's W, the fire rescue positions funded. It is, what base, we're gonna build two more fire stations. We got it, we're gonna have to have the money to pay. Uh, we're gonna have the money to, to furnish it, to, to buy the equipment. So just remember, none of that forethought is in this budget. None of the goals that you have the departments put out are in this budget. So it's not like we're being reckless.
And I'm all for, and I'm all for Nancy having that money in the general fund. I'm not for spending it, is what I'm saying. I'm for growing that fund.
But I think we need to reiterate what the state's actually doing to us because as a, you know, they're saying we're gonna give schools five percent, a five percent increase. They're giving SOQ, which is less than half of the stu.
Wait a second.
Teachers.
Three hundred thirty-two thousand, one forty-five.
For, for every one percent?
A one percent salary increase, fully loaded with benefits, excluding health insurance for all staff would be estimated.
Oh, that's all staff, not, not just the not, non-SOQ.
That's correct. Three hundred thirty-two thousand, one forty-six.
That's not, that's not the number I asked for. The number I asked for was the non-SOQ people.
That's what she provided to me. I will go back with.
That's not what we asked.
I would, I just wanna ma, make sure we're all on the same page. The state's saying they're giving schools a five percent raise. They're only giving SOQ employees, which is less than half of the teachers.
Less than half.
Three percent with a two percent match from the county.
Correct.
On the sheriff's side, law enforcement side, they're giving only the comp board salaries a three percent raise with a two percent match. And that's less than half of the deputies and not the whole sheriff's office.
Plus it's not their salary, it's the comp board salary. If we were way above, if we were paying deputies comp board salary, we wouldn't have anybody work.
So, so it's, we're looking at like a one and a half percent increase from the state for those, and that doesn't include EMS. And it doesn't include any other staff in the county, which is, which is.
Rest of the constitutional office, a few people in treasurer's office, a few people in commissioner, clerk of the court and the commissioner, I mean, the, the common of attorney.
Right, so when you look at the overall, with the, the state's saying they're giving five percent to schools and the sheriffs for law enforcement, that is not a true statement.
No, we're putting in more.
And the county's portion of that is significantly more than the state's giving us.
Correct.
And I just think we need to make sure everybody understands that because people hear a five percent from the state. Those aren't the real numbers. Those are, those are numbers that they boast about, but they don't cover, they don't cover all the school employees. They don't cover all the sheriff's office and they don't cover any EMS, fire rescue, zero fire rescue people, that's all county employees. So to be clear, when we're talking about this, the number is much bigger.
I would, I would, uh, I would.
I'm gonna give you the number in one minute.
I bet it's more people being funded fully by the county and when you add the schools and you add the, the other positions that aren't funded, along with the ones they are funded being only on the comp board salary. Then the, the majority of the money's coming in from the county to make all that work.
Right, I think.
Just on.
I think that we're only getting one and a half percent for the raises from the state.
Right.
Totally, what we're looking at, the number is really small compared to what we have to really do.
To make it five percent.
To make, exactly, Mr. Senator, make it five percent.
I just made it half.
They bought three.
I just, this whole fallacy of, you know, the state's doing all this isn't, isn't the case.
Call from the center by one. See, for, for, for me, uh, board, the, the issue is our revenue streams from the county come from our real estate personal property and then our businesses. And when we look at the county, there, there's only, in particular, this economic climate use, some people are hurting. And I don't like it any more than any of us, but and the fact that the, the average income in the county and the number of senior citizens that we have in the county, we have a large number of senior citizens in this county. So I just think we had, just have to take it into consideration. There's only so much that we're gonna be able to, to do until our businesses grow. If we had a Walmart, the Harris Theater, yeah, we said, we would say, oh man, we're doing great. You know, when, when um, MCD put that twenty-five million into, oh, that was great to expand. But we're continuing to grow, we're thin, continually have needs and I just honestly do not see how we can continue to go beyond what state says are given five percent to SOQ's. It's not really true, let's just say, Ms. Thomas said, the numbers aren't adding up. But the, but the taxpayers are actually carrying it.
I, I think if I, if I, I just wanna double check and, and Ms. Smith, I'm gonna let you do this when you figure it out or, 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 or get the number we wanted. But if it's three hundred and thirty-two thousand for every one percent of everybody.
In the school system.
In the school system and half of those people. We're just trying to do it, you know, just to get a rough idea. So we said half, so that's one sixty-six, oh seven one. Five percent for them is eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The other three percent is three thirty-two, that's one point one million. Seems like they're only giving us five hundred thousand dollars from the state for all these raises.
Right.
The rest is coming from, from us, cause we're spending eight, eight hundred and thirty thousand for SOQ.
When you say ninety-eight, and they, they're way over a million, a million and a half.
We got a five, we got a three percent with a two percent match that adds up to five hundred thousand dollars we get. And we're gonna end up putting in one point some million.
No, eight, one, eight hundred and six is what's in the, in the budget.
For their total raises?
No, our share. No, for our share.
Well, that's why I asked Ms. Smith to check, cause we were just trying to do it quick, but it seems like we did not get as much as folks thought we got.
She has provided that the funding um, from the House that projected to be provided by the state for, for the amendment um, would be eight hundred fifty-four thousand, four oh four. That would require a local match of four hundred and seventy thousand, eight seven. That is only for SOQ.
That's only SOQ.
Yeah.
Now, the, so a five percent salary increase.
Wait, say that again.
So the amendment would be.
Was eight hundred.
Yes, or eight hundred fifty-four thousand, four oh four. Yes, or eight hundred fifty-four thousand four oh four, with a required local match of four hundred seventy thousand eight seventy, so that's the three and two. And so that's only for SOQ positions. So a five percent salary increase for all staff would require local support of eight oh six, three twenty-one.
Which is what I got in the chart.
Which is what's included in the.
That, that, that can't be right.
Nope.
I mean, I trust you to have the right numbers, but that formula can't be right if we're gonna, if half the people are non SOQs.
You look at, but you look at the staff that is not SOQ. It's your lower end, but it's your lower salary. And there's not enough administration, which administration's not SOQ either.
Some of it is.
But it doesn't, some of them are.
I think so, someone recovered it.
Principals, that there were.
The principals that are considered.
So the five percent for non, the five percent for non SOQs, we're doing with other administrative staff too?
The school's five percent matches, eight oh six with every employee that they, they would have is five percent.
Every employee gets a five percent raise.
Instead of just the SOQ people. And I don't know who, which one is an SOQ.
So that costs, that costs for the, to do the, for the, what the state did. Which is say a five percent.
SOQ.
SOQ raise for teachers, but must be matched three percent, their, match their three percent with our two percent. So they, they pone it up for eight hundred and fifty-four thousand four oh four, and the county is ponying up.
Four seventy.
Four seventy.
No.
Well, to do everybody, we would be ponying up eight oh six.
Well, to do everybody, plus the, eight oh six, plus the four seventy.
No, eight oh six is everybody.
Okay, see, we don't.
So it's not.
We don't have real matching.
So in order, so a five percent for every employee would be one million six hundred sixty thousand seven twenty-five, that's every.
I was adding the four oh seven and eight oh six, no.
So that is those two numbers combined, basically.
So you have state fu- so one million six sixty, state funded, or would be eight fifty-four. And then we would provide the local match, the three, that's the three and two, four seventy, so the total SOQ positions would be one million three hundred twenty-five thousand. Two seventy-four, the non SOQ positions would be all local, three hundred thirty-five thousand four fifty-one. Given what the total increase would be, the one million six sixty, so our total local obligation would be eight oh six, three twenty-one.
It did have all non SOQs in there, right, at three thirty?
Right, I put the non SOQ positions for the, that's solely local, but that's at a five percent.
Right, right, so we just.
Take that and divide it by five.
Just divide it by five, okay. That's HBCU math, right?
But anyway, that's where that eight oh six came from, I showed you last week.
That's right, we can count. Just add and subtract, that's what the body.
If you just do the SOQ, you are leaving out the people that are, you know, the other workers in the system.
And, and. And some, and some teachers.
And some.
But we need to understand what the real commitment is, that's, I'm not trying to say right now, yes, no. I'm just trying to figure out what the real commitment is.
Right. We're, cause. The state's putting in good, pretty good for the schools compared to us, but we're putting in a fair amount.
Yeah.
To do, because we gotta do, I mean, if, if you do everybody, and if you don't, we're putting in four hundred thousand.
And that's a decision, it, it, are we gonna do that?
It is.
Anybody here wanna say, hey, I wanted to, I wanted the state SOQ folks get a raise? But, in, in our constitutional officers' offices as well.
Same thing.
And the deputies, it's the same, same.
You have two deputies making the same pay, one gonna get five percent, cause he's, has to be funded by, you know, partially funded.
Yeah, we want, we, we wanna do the budget first and come back to the advertised after. We're just doing the budget first, we're doing the budget now.
You gotta decide what you wanna do, right.
Decide what we wanna do. And then I'll give us a, a rate of what we're gonna do. Right, yeah, so I guess. So I guess my question now, is there any question about? Are there any other questions about the budget that he's presented here, in terms of what a penny means, what he's, he's, uh, asked us to do? Uh, are we comfortable with the proposed numbers that Mr. Cully presented to us?
Mr. whatever you would like to.
I have to start, I pick up a child.
Okay.
My wife can't drive, she's.
Can, can I ask you one question before you leave?
Yes, sir.
Knowing that we're gonna, uh, discuss a proposed tax rate?
For advertisement. I'd like to go high, and we can draw, bring it back later.
So would you give me a number for your league?
I would like to go with the eight, if we need to decrease at another time, so be it.
Okay, thank you, Mr..
Yes, sir. I apologize.
All right, so, so now that, so now that we have. Now that we have Mr. Cully's, uh, uh, information, and he's saying that in order to. So, we have Mr. Cully's information for the budget. We have the, the information of what it will mean for, uh. Each department across. Now we need to move to item number two, which is. What do we do in terms of advertised tax rate? I think that's our next discussion, in terms of how this board, um, that's why I asked Mr. Forehand before he left. What was his, the number that he, um, was, was willing to look at, and he looked at the eight cent. Wanted to advertise eight cent, which is a seventy-seven cent, uh, tax rate for. For the. Tax rate. Um, anyone wanna start the discussion on the tax rate?
Well, I, I have a question, Mr. Cully, the budget that you've shown us so far. Does that include the raises and everything that was in the presentation last week?
Yes.
For everybody?
Yes.
And will we get a line by line? Uh, cause I haven't got that yet.
Well, we, I just put all of that public safety salary scale stuff in, but if you wanna change all that, that's a fair amount of work, and I wanna print out a bunch of stuff, if y'all wanna change it tonight. I was kinda gonna give you what we were going to public hearing with, cause if you end up with multiple versions, it gets confused. Yeah, so that, that's why I'm giving you a paper copy, but we can, we can print that out pretty quick, and I can email those of you that, those of you that want a, a digital version. All these links are not gonna work, because you're not gonna have it saved in the same places I.
Yeah, I mean, this is just for now, this is just for now, which is fine.
Yeah, mine, mine's linked all over multiple documents, but.
Yeah, but, but the only thing that I, that I wanted to see, because part of what we're doing today is discussing tax rate.
Correct.
So at seventy-seven, I see what you're doing, now go back to seventy-three, and I could say, okay, at seventy-three, I see something. And then at sixty-nine, I would see something, so, you know, if, yeah.
Wouldn't seventy-four look like, Mr. Cully?
Now what you ought to do is print this sheet out from sixty-nine to seventy-seven, just like it is, and give it to us.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea, I mean, seriously, that gives you all the data.
Send it to us in Excel, we can manipulate ourselves, right?
Yeah, this will work.
No, if you made a PDF of each page, we would see each page.
I can print this little piece, yeah, the results.
Yeah.
Did you do that, Mr. Cully, just go, uh, sixty-nine through seventy-seven to Mr. Thompson?
Just, just do a print area, so we can compare.
Let's do this area and give you all every different, every different one, sure, I can do that, but we still need, we need to set it tonight for public hearing. You don't have to decide what you're gonna do, um, but it'll, it'll really ha- hamper us if you don't, you know.
We're gonna set it tonight, but we just need to see the differences, so.
Those, those are the differences, the higher you're willing to, to at least advertise may. Help with the, uh, crediting agencies and, you know, if they wanna look at what we're doing. Versus the more you take out of the fund balance while they're doing all that rating stuff.
It's a truth, we only have, we just like two million that's, that's in cover, cause we need to keep fifteen in there, keep our ratings up.
No, uh, let me explain, real quick. We have, we have various policies, which the, um, we're only really good and, and excellent. On the strength of our fund balance being up in the twenty percent, not fifteen. So, if you took us back to just the policy, we would be okay with our policy, the rating agencies would look, well. Your debt to assess value, your debt to per capita, your, all of our debt would then look really bad, and we wouldn't have a real positive. I would, I use it to like going to buy something in your personal life, and you, you've got four car loans and a house loan. But you happen to have two or three hundred thousand in the bank, and you just happen to like to borrow your, instead of paying cash, you wanna keep that money in the bank. It's that same thing, they look at us and go, well, they've got a lot of debt. But, they've managed to save a, a, a lot of money, I don't think they're gonna default on that debt with this kinda money in the bank. And so, as we lower that to just policy or the minimum, cause that's the minimum you're gonna be keeping. And suddenly that doesn't look so good, and, and, and that really is, I think Courtney would tell you that all day long, that is why we, we will. Um, and on our utility, uh, debt, we're probably gonna be looking at a, a one dr- drop rate to that. Because that's not sus- it's utility, but our utility's not self-funded, it's funded by general obligation transfer, subject to appropriation. While we all know you've always appropriated that, these people are looking at national stuff when they give you these credit ratings, so we've always heard, just today. We're probably gonna be a little bit lower on that than we'll, as far as our rating, not because we've done anything wrong, it's just how they're, they're gonna. Gonna perceive it, so if we go into this budget, thinking we're gonna take a lot of money out of the fund balance, I think we're really gonna hurt ourselves on, on our borrowing. And so I, 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 that's why I've argued that, at least for the advertisement stuff, let's, let's look at. Somewhat close to what, you know, what I proposed, maybe you do six, but, you know, I, um, you make people mad with six or eight, who, I, you know.
Well, like, we haven't raised taxes for.
No, I can show you that in this.
I can show you that in this jar.
We're doing something, we're doing something right, and that property values are going up, you want your property values to go up. You don't want it to be, be bad, even if you lose your investment in your property. So, yeah, it makes you taxes go up, but aren't you glad your property's worth more for what you do selling? So, I would agree with Mr. Forehand, I think we advertise at the sense, we, we hit our line by line, we look at it. We have another work session sometime, and if we feel comfortable with, when you get down, we can, but we can't go up, so.
I'm, I'm, I wouldn't ask you.
And I don't think there's anybody at this table, we would wanna go up anymore than that, so if we start at the top, we can come down.
Mr. Black, you come.
I'm, I'm, I agree with Mr. Forehand and Ms. Law, I, you know. We, the last major tax increase, Mr. Cully mentioned it, that we had, was because of the bond referendum, so you see between two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. We have been even since two thousand fourteen on the tax rate. My water bill, my electric bill, my cable bill, all those bills have gone up in that time. And, you know, the tax bill, with the exception of obviously the assessment and so forth, but the tax bill has remained the same for eight years. And, I mean, we have expenses, we have things that we have to cover. I mean, we voted that we wanted to do a sewer project, it's how much is the sewer project, sixteen million?
Twenty, twenty, some maybe.
We have Ladysmith Road that we need to finish off, we have a fire station in Carmel Church that is, that is desperately needed. Um, to help, to help Bowling Green and to help Ladysmith. I mean, if we go, we have a sheriff's office that is down twelve or thirteen deputies, whatever he's saying. Um, we have a fire chief that's saying he's having a hard time competing with others. Um, if we don't do something, it's just only gonna get exponentially worse each year. And, I mean, I, I just think we, we can b- bury our heads in the sand and pretend it's not here. Or we can just face reality, and yeah, I mean, i- if, no one likes a tax increase, I, I, no one does, I don't like a tax increase, but. If you tell me that I'm gonna have deputy when I call nine-one-one, when I'm gonna have, uh, a fire, like if I, if there's something down happening in Carmel Church, that Ladysmith's not there. And now Ladysmith's gonna be there because Carmel Church is there to cover the fire, I can explain that to constituents, this is why we need it. I mean, I don't think we're just blowing it on, you know, I mean, just pet projects, this isn't, this isn't compliance yet. This is, this is stuff that is, I mean, we, twenty years ago, whoever was on this floor twenty, twenty-five years ago, when you agreed to a Ladysmith Village, which are good. And Pendleton, there are certain, there are certain things, infrastructure, that we need to put in place to make those communities thrive. Which is the sewer system, and we don't have a choice. I mean, if we don't operate it, and then a builder comes in and wants to put in another fifty homes in Pendleton, or fifty homes in Ladysmith Village, and they can't do it, cause we don't have the infrastructure. They can come after us. Cause we agreed to those subdivisions twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. So, I, I don't think that we have a choice but to advertise the eight cents, and if there's a way we can find, I think we're living in a, in, uh, alternate universe. If we think that we're gonna be able to cut this down considerably.
I did show you ten, ten, top ten projects make up the whole two and a half million dollars that, uh. Budget is up, taking out the Ladysmith Road payment, you know, that, that's where all that stuff came from, and most everything else is, is, is just cost. And, 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 so yeah, I think you can nibble at the edges, we could go things, oh, we, we might can save ten thousand here and that, and. But I don't know that you could nibble at the edges even to a penny. And you might can, I'm not saying that, uh, but it's gonna hamper some people's ability to do things, service contracts, certain like, things like that, that you drop off, then you have issues, then.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's a little unfair to talk about what happened twenty or twenty-five years ago, when, um. At that particular time, those were the right decisions. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's, it's always easy, and a lot of people have said that, well, we, you should've raised taxes twenty years ago, or whatever. It's, it's easy to look back at things, we didn't, cause people couldn't afford it, and I think we're in the same boat now, can people afford it? We have, um, I think I just looked at King George, there's seventy cents. So there, you know, longer than we are. But, 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 but those are, I mean, those are things, we did things. We, we paid cash for Ladysmith Road, we all wanted it. But, I didn't, I didn't agree with paying cash for it, cause I thought we should've paid cash if we had something there that would bring that money back. We didn't, I mean, we didn't, if we had paid, if we hadn't paid cash, we'd probably be three, three million more in. It's a, it's a good idea, I'm not saying, we, you know, it's a bad decision now, cause it is what it is. Where, where we are now is at a point where our growth, business growth, is gonna have to pay for some of what we're doing.
It absolutely is.
And, and.
It absolutely is.
We have to identify where that is and focus on that some more, that's all I'm really saying, cause that's, that's the reality, sub- subdivisions.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be growth in, from the houses that are coming in too.
But, but subdivisions don't, don't pay for their weight. One, one house gives me two thousand dollars, and it costs me eight thousand or ten thousand to educate.
But at the same time, if you don't have rooftops, you don't get businesses in, so it's a catch, right? It, it, because if you don't have the rooftops, then, 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 then whatever publics or whatever grocery store you want is a product.
So we, that's, that's the reality, that's the catch, that's the reality, and that's what happened twenty years ago, when we said, let's do Ladysmith Village. Let's do Pendleton, maybe we'll get something, and we got some things, now we're getting some things on Ladysmith Road. You know, the Wal- Walmart didn't come, that's a different story, but that could've been a good thing, maybe, maybe not.
The ra- the rating agencies understood that too, when we talked to them about that today, and the development of, of the sheets, they were, uh. Really excited to hear that we were getting that type of development, that they saw that as a positive sign. And we, and I talked about the Walmart owning the property, but, you know, they used to build three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty stores a year, and cut it to twenty-five, and we lost ours. They completely understood that concept, and it was not a negative for us at all, for the community, they were positive with the tractor supply. And the sheets and that development starting to, to get under construction here in the county.
I mean, the things that I've talked to Gary about in, in Carmel Church are really, really good, but they're two years away.
No, they, they don't help us now.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, do we go to eight cents now, and then say, all right, you know, we don't need to raise taxes next year or the year after?
Right, and, and knowing that next year we'll be back with some firemen that we're gonna need to put in, and the station they're gonna build.
Yeah.
Knowing the schools are gonna be back wanting additional money, maybe some state match. Knowing the schools are going to be back wanting additional money, maybe some state match money.
No, they're not going to come back.
No, they would never come back.
So I mean, you, you know, nobody's going to be sitting here next year going, oh, we don't have any, you know, so, and, and that's, that's sort of.
They, they, but the reality, the public service thing is another one-fifty next year.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Sealy?
I think we need to advertise high in public hearing, you know, a lot of times we do stuff and everybody's just sort of, wow, 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 you know, doesn't matter. But I think it's time to get, to advertise the rate and see what folks say.
Okay, my opinion is, I, if, if we are going to look at something like that, I would look at four cents now and come back again next year, when we've had another chance to see what's going on. I still think there are a lot of people here hurt from COVID.
I'm not saying go up eight cents, I'm just saying the advertisement.
I, I don't even want to cause that heart trauma. My, I'm going to give my, my thought process, I know from, from my area in particular, that folks in, in my district have been, were low to moderate income, and they, they have taken a, a beating with COVID, and although we haven't raised the tax rate in like five years.
Seven years.
Seven years, seven years. The reality for me is that taxpayers have bore the brunt of making sure that we have what we needed. I'm not sure how many year, up till last year, we've had a surplus based on the budget each year. So that means that we have budgeted the tax rate and had a surplus, that means people have put the money in to, to move the county. Now what we're saying is that we've fallen behind because of the cost. Now that we've, the, the, the costs have increased, but many people in, in the, in the county have lost their job. So I can appreciate, yeah, sure, we, I'd love to give, to, to, to have the highest salary possible, but that is the issue. What is the ha- highest salary possible based on your revenue stream? That is the, the issue for me. I just don't believe we should advertise eight cents, I could not support an eight cent tax increase. I just can't support it, eight, advertise it eight, because I, I just, in my heart, I just can't see it. But I will yield to whatever the board wants, uh, as the majority, and whatever the majority wants, that's how this board moves, and so.
And I'm not saying go to eight, I'm just saying let's advertise eight, and then we can always, as Mrs. Long said, you know, coming down is the easy part. Coming down is, is Mr. Cully's spreadsheet going, you know, here's what we're, because we have, in unencumbered balance wise, we have been chewing into the unencumbered balance the last two years in particular. So we, so we are, we are one point seven into this year's unencumbered balance. So we, we are past the point of.
Really?
Last year, yeah, we came in one point seven, of the, we spent of the unencumbered balance.
But you. You're going to get that. You.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, for twenty-one, I'm going to put some. Remember, remember.
That's semantics.
No, but the real, I'm looking at the real budget numbers, not the one time, we're doing one time money with CARES money, I get that. But in real spending, in real dollars, in real budget, we spent one point seven million dollars in the unencumbered balance in the real budget. Yeah, we're going to get some back, and I'm not saying there aren't some things we can't do. I'm, I'm willing to advertise eight, but I think there are some things we can do to bring that number down when it comes down to actually set the budget. But that's going to be an agreement we all have to make. Because there are some, there are some dollars coming, and there are some dollars that are in limbo that we can bring back into the unencumbered balance. We can say we're going to, we're going to, and we can set a tax rate that's lower, lower than we're advertising and say, here's what we think we're going to spend from the unencumbered balance, and here's where those funds are coming from. Mr. Thomas had it for this, for next year, and let's look the year after, or we're out. I don't disagree, what, all I'm saying is, is that everybody, the reality is, eight cents doesn't even make us whole for what we've spent from the unencumbered balance this last year in real spending, not in, not in the dollars that we can recover other ways, but in the real, the real budget, we spent one point seven million dollars, real budget, real balance.
No, because he's. It's like a, it's like a, it's like a cruelty, that money, that, some of that money's coming back to us. And even though the whole one point seven is not encumbered, only a portion of that one point seven, and if we get eight or nine hundred thousand back, then back.
No, he's.
Only spent, wait a minute, wait a minute, if we get eight hundred thousand back or nine hundred thousand of one point seven, then it goes back into the unencumbered balance, correct?
It, it would, but I think the one point seven he's talking about is the audit number from twenty, where we actually spent into the fund balance, one point seven million dollars.
Yeah, nineteen to twenty, right.
Right.
That doesn't.
That's not, I'm not talking that.
That doesn't include what happened in last year's budget where we got money still sitting in limbo, as you said.
Correct, but we spent real dollars, budget for budget, dollar for dollar, we spent one point seven out of the unencumbered balance, it's all open in.
So what shows, right, and what shows our expenditures are higher than our revenue.
Which we did.
Right.
Right.
And now we're adding more expenses.
The trivial.
We're adding more.
I mean, we haven't, we haven't said, honestly, let's not do this, or let's do that.
Right, but.
You still got that service for, for things that we haven't said we're going to do for sure.
Correct.
Sixty-two, sixty-four. What was one in certain real estate work for that?
I don't know, I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'm just, see, that's, see, that's the issue to me. Right, we just don't have the big industrial of backing.
Not yet.
From revenue.
Not yet.
Let's smile, Mr. Thomas. But we don't have the industrial revenue backing that we're sitting here as if we do, we don't have that. And, and it's not going to come until it comes.
Well, we need to be aggressive too, we can't just sit and say.
No, 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 that's a different, that's a different story.
Here's the other thing that I said, Jim, is we still have, we still have a bounty grant that's sitting out that we, we need, how much?
Six hundred.
Almost seven hundred thousand dollars to pay for.
We awarded that right, bang, right out of fund balance.
So I'm just saying, what you're saying we got coming back may be gone.
And five hundred plus for addition, add admin for rest rate, and that's all fund balance.
I'm just, I'm just, let's add up all the numbers, because the.
Can we redo that?
It's already underway.
Yeah, I mean, and then it's, they haven't changed anything, and election law is going to make any of that better.
They're killing us, I mean, the state is sending us stuff that they're not paying for, I mean, we're not getting any money increased.
The registrar's, the registrar's budget's up twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-eight percent.
And how much of that did we get from the state?
I haven't, they haven't sent anything yet, whether they fully funded a registrar salary or an increase or not.
As Jeff said, it's nothing new from the state.
No.
It's been that way twenty, twenty-five years.
But it's getting worse, if you look at the scope of things, because this, it's getting wider. It used to be schools and the sheriff's office, now, now it's, it's opening up to other areas that we're having to pay for that we can't, we can't do anything about.
The environmental stuff is killing us, I mean, of the, I mean, that's killing all the county, I mean, the, the, what do they call it, the whip and so forth, the F P S T one, having storm warning management. I mean, all that stuff is now coming down on us, and they make these mandates, and then we have to pay for them, absolutely.
And I'm, and they've been doing it for twenty years, that's what I'm saying, it's not.
It's getting worse.
A given administration.
Oh, no, I'm not saying.
It's been the state for twenty years.
And I'm just saying the state in general, I'm not.
Right.
It, it's just the state.
And we are, we are, we are in between, you know, we're between Hanover and Spotsy, which, which, they're growing like weeds.
Yeah, Spotsy especially.
Yeah, they're growing like weeds, I mean, we are, we are really the, the, the last Sebastian of the rural life, so.
And that's okay.
The, it's, it's going to change one day, but right now we do have to have the infrastructure that we have to pay for, put things in place. So when, when it comes, we are not left holding the empty bag, so we understand that. But at this point, gentlemen, we've discussed the tax rate, lady and gentleman, and in order to advertise a tax rate, we, we need to take a vote on a rate. And at this point, I will entertain motions for a tax rate.
Chair, I knew that we advertised seventy-seven cents as the new tax rate. In public hearing.
This is long, right, right.
Tax rate for public hearing.
This is Long has made a motion that we advertise seventy-seven cents as the, uh, rate for, for a public hearing.
I'll second.
Uh, second by Mr. Black, any discussion? We had a discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Call for roll, Mr. Thomas?
Nay.
Nay, Mr. Sealy?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy, aye, and Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Black, aye, and Ms. Long?
Aye.
And I vote may as well, the motion carries, three to two, we will advertise, and Mr. Forehand did leave his comments before he left, although he didn't vote. I'm not here, I don't think we can do that.
No, but he did.
Certainly, he did, but he did give his, give his comment that he would, uh, agree with a eight cent tax rate advertised.
Just advertise.
I always got.
Public hearing.
Again, make that, make that clear, it's not necessarily the tax rate.
It's not the rate of the advertised.
So again, the.
Discussion purposes.
Public hearing.
We could have always had a second. Motion carries.
You, you're making it tough to get the tax bills out.
Mr. Cully used to advertise eight cents, uh, for our public hearing.
Yeah, get that done.
In the, in the advertisement.
It's, it's got to be by state law, because this, it's always, but this year's funny because it's a reassessment year.
Say the equalized rate.
It has to set the equalized rate and increase your tax rates, and it's funny because they'll say your tax rate is increasing from eighty-three cent to seventy-seven cent, and it's very confusing, and everybody will be confused, but it's set in.
In the advertisement, is it possible to say, if your house costs two hundred thousand dollars, you paid X amount uh, under eighty-three cents, and you'll pay X amount under?
I will see, they have got that so specific of what you've got to lay out in that ad, might have to run a second ad, I'll, I'll push it.
Is there a way to put the, is there a way to put the chart that you're asking online?
Well, you can put a spreadsheet.
That's what I'm saying, put that spreadsheet on the website.
Put the one up with it, that gives you the, like you've given us the range of house and, and what it goes up.
No, we can do that, that's easy to do.
Because that'll make it much easier for anybody to understand.
Because I, Smith messed me up, because I said twenty percent of eighty-three was sixty-four.
No, I didn't.
He said that's not how it works, so thank you.
Now you saw it in here.
Thank you for correcting me, I, I don't mean that to bad.
I would like to make a motion, we recess.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, no more, update on the, I'm sorry, you're right.
I was going to, I'm, okay, I'm going to make a motion, we recessed at five P M. on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one for Dr. Cleveland's school board, is it in this room?
Yes. Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
There's motion and probably second that we adjourn, we recess until, we recess till March twenty-third, at which time we meet with the school board for a work session at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are recessing.